We'll come to order the March 11, 2024 business meeting with stamp for the pledge of allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, perfect and just as our own.
Ms. Burgoyne?
Here.
Mrs. Lemon?
Here.
Mr. Metallik?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Shalinski?
Here.
Mrs. Seko?
Here.
Mr. Taz?
Here.
Mrs. Welsh?
Here.
Mrs. Snatchell?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Mr. Burgoyne, I didn't realize you were sitting there, but I saw you were so...
Movie tears.
Yeah, sorry. Student reports and achievements to be held.
Here's Julie in here, it's the berry pop.
Okay, Mr. Lee is here.
Hi, everyone. So I just wanted to give you a little update that the student council did just get their shirts in. We'd ordered them at the beginning of the year and they came in on Wednesday. So we had our put pictures with these shirts on March 1st. That's when all the clubs took their pictures and student council was down there. Tomorrow, the student forum heads to a end-of-the-year dinner banquet. They're going, I'm not sure where they're going, but the student forum is heading there tomorrow during school. And our blood drive is scheduled for April 8th, that is our spring blood drive. The National Honor Society this year decided to ask us to do the spring blood drive. It will be the same times as the winter one. And I know you guys asked a question about that before, so I just wanted to let you know. And that's it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And 2.2 Elementary Student Assistant Leadership Team, the ESAL, is Mrs. Karras, here.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Stacy Karras. I am the sponsor of the Elementary Student Assistant Leadership Team. We thank you for inviting us here tonight. I'm honored to present to you these extremely wonderful student leaders. They are going to take a moment to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about what they do on a day-to-day basis.
Hello, my name is Brady Crabbe and I represent Mrs. Zigg's classroom. Tonight, we would like to talk a moment to explain what ESAL is and does.
Hello, my name is Nora Fiala and I represent Ms. Spiddick's classroom. The acronym ESAL stands for Elementary Student Assi- Assistant Leadership Team. The members you see here tonight were voted into the position by their peers.
Hello, my name is Leah Listesson and I represent Ms. Karras's homeroom. We ESAL members promote leadership academically, behaviorally, and socially. We must maintain a Pacific GPA and display appropriate behavior.
Hello, my name is Erin Ardenny and I represent Ms. Zigg's classroom. We also assist with the operations of school and help during special activities or events.
Hello, my name is Harper Renger and I represent Ms. Karras's classroom. These events include, but are not limited to, raising and lowering the flag, warning announcements, collecting attendance and lunch count, organizing lost and found, as well as the recess equipment and tending to the outdoor plants, just to name a few.
Hello, Mike.
Hello, my name is Macy Sherwood and I represent Mr. Foster's classroom. As part of keeping Pennsylvania beautiful program, BAC is a little, is a literal free school zone, which encourages us to clean the school grounds at least twice a year. We may have tracked from the school playground as part of our fall cleanup. In the spring, we hope to pick up litter in the front of the school.
Hello, my name is Leah Stakes and I represent Mrs. Spiddick's classroom. We are honored here, we are honored to be here today to represent the students and the faculty of BAC in its early form of student government.
Hello, my name is Cam Rivera and I represent Ms. Spiddick's classroom. We would like to thank the board, Mr. Pushkar, Ms. Mankie, and all here tonight for taking the time to recognize us.
Yeah, we do have one team member that was unable to be here tonight. Her name is Delaney Slobek. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ESAL and Mrs. Karras. Thank you. Section 3, Routine Business. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the business meeting date of February 12, 2024 as presented?
Second.
Mr. Price with a second by Mrs. Seko, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any questions tonight on the agenda? May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Mr. Price, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Metallik, any questions? Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any public comment tonight? Section 4, Reports and Presentations Correspondence. Okay. Section 4.2, Administration. Let's start with Ms. O'Donnell this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I attended a webinar for the governor's budget, but of course, nobody has a crystal ball to tell us what's gonna happen, so that's still up in the air. And I'll be attending a meeting on April 5th for the new insurance rates. And did you want me to go through this?
Please, please do.
At your desk, we have, I'd have placed the revenue side of the budget for informational, and a little refresher for everybody, some news, some not. Just kind of goes through the revenue sides of the budget, the Act 1, sources of our revenue. And Act 1 was designed to help school districts reduce real estate taxes by shifting the burden using gaming revenue. So our index this year, I know I've said this many times, is 6.9%. Last year was 5.4%. So if we could raise taxes 0.98530 without approval from PDE, and that would generate approximately about $800,000 worth of revenue. The next page goes through our, the history of the Act 1 index that we've gone through. Again, next, the year after this, I'm not sure this is the highest it's ever been. I wouldn't doubt that they would come back down. So it's hard to kind of pass up that revenue. The next page, you guys already have like a history of the millage, I think I gave that to you a couple of last month. But that just shows where our millage is at right now. There are three categories on the revenue side of the budget, local sources, state sources, federal sources. Some of the local, local sources are the real estate taxes, per capita taxes, property tax, the delinquent tax, earned income. Anything from the state would be your basic head subsidy, transportation subsidy, special ed subsidy. And obviously, the federal sources would be any kind of ARPS or money, Title I, Title II. But that's page just goes to the earned income tax collections. They, since Keystone has taken over, it's really increased. We're usually over budget on that, which is a good thing. Through the pandemic, it was a little scary, but it did not go down, so that was, that was good for us. Next page discusses the real estate tax collections, which our current millage is 14.2793. So that means that a homeowner pays approximately $14.28 for every thousand assessed value. Another way to look at it is, the house currently assessed at 120,000. I think that's our median assessed value, actually, in our district. Tax bill would be, you would multiply the 0.0142793 times 112,000. And our real estate taxes account for about 7.9 million of our budget. Delinquent taxes are done by the Washington County Tax Plan Bureau. They send a check to us every month. Per capita tax, everybody tells it a nuisance tax, but it's about $18,000. We don't want it to turn away, so they keep sending it out. The real estate transfer tax is sent by the county. They in turn give us 0.5% of the collections that they receive from when we sold houses. Basic ed subsidy is all from the state. That is, they tell us what we gain, so we have no control over that. And it's increased the last few years as well. And he has that in his new budget to increase as well, so fingers crossed. Same with special ed subsidy. Transportation subsidy is based off of, we do a report at the end of the year. I have to get a report from Greens and Mrs. Slay. How many miles we travel with students, without students, year vehicles. So that's why it's good to kind of keep rotating those newer buses in if we can afford it. All the Title I, Title II allocations are federally given to us. We don't have any control over that either. That is, increased a little bit per year, but not a lot. It's gone down, it went down this year from 22, 23. So the property tax relief, that while eases the financial burden of homeownership by providing us with means to lower property taxes to owners via the gaming funds. So the budget secretary has certified the total amount of the revenue in the property tax relief fund and the property tax reserve fund by April 15th each year. They have large increases in 22, 23, but it went back down last year. But usually, hopefully, it's gonna stay around that 670,000. The sinking fund reimbursements are reimbursements we get from the debt service payments that we make. Not, not all of them are reimbursable, but some of the payments we make on the debt service for the buildings are. So this year, the budget amount is lower because we did the pension bond, so we're not paying, making the higher payments like we have in the past few years. We do rent the auditorium to several organizations. And we do get royalties from Range Resources, that's all included in this Reynolds 6910 account number. Range Resources. It fluctuates every year what we get from them, so it's kind of hard to predict. Last year, I think we were at about 100, 100 and something thousand, this year it's not that much. So our timeline for the budget is, I think next month we'll do the expenditure side. And then in May, we have to pass a proposed final budget, and June we'll pass the final budget. Next page is just kind of a graph of where our chunks of money come from. Most of it is all state, state money, local money is second, federal is 4.2% is the least. The next page just shows if we would raise through the index the different assessed values, tax increase would, it increased, that 120,000 would increase $118,000, 150,000 assessed value would increase about 147, and so on and so on. The next page shows where the millages across Washington County. We're kind of in the middle there. And it shows what from previous year, who went up, who went down. And there's only one that went down, Washington went down. And the last page is just a bar chart of showing that, those numbers.
So there are a couple of things that I want to point out. If you were to go to the index this year for next year's budget, the 6.9%, that, that number of the $800,000 is so large because start point, the property came back on the tax rules for next year. That means there's more assessed value that's being taxed that we can collect on. So, so that's a good thing. Ordinarily, you would not get $800,000 of more tax money out of a, out of a, going to the index. So we can kind of got it, a good opportunity in two ways. One is the index is higher, and two is the increase in property values there. The other thing that I want to mention, and I can give you a spreadsheet. You can call when earlier this year. When we took another bond issue, we have it kind of structured such that to pay for that bond issue, we're gonna look at, you know, needing to have at least 300, roughly $350,000 in new revenue every year, just to meet the new debt from the new bond issue. So what you'll notice, what I just gave you is, all of the bond, the bonds that we have, or the notes that we have, and those are the payments. So, for example, Jamie just made, I do believe you just paid the Series A and Series B of 215. So is there a balance on there, Jamie, or is that, that last, did I pass one of these down your way? Those two will come off after this year. But if you look in the far right-hand column, you'll see that our annual payments go up to the three points, so, you know, over a million dollars, 1.2 million dollars, and they kind of level off. So what we, when we took this bond issue, we said, okay, we have extra money to pay that, to absorb that, and we'll take money out of that every year, but it'll be a reduced amount because tax, tax money will take the place of it, so that when you're five years out, it balances out, if that makes sense. So at a minimum, where you're looking at $800,000 in new, potential new tax dollars, at a minimum, you need to go 350, and that's just to support the new obligation of debt. The rest is, you know, our best of money for all districts are going away after this year, and that's a big chunk of money. Increased costs for healthcare, and Jamie, what is the percentage that they're saying for next year?
They told me to use 10% in my preliminary budget. They're hoping it's not, they're hoping it's not two digits.
Healthcare costs going up by 10%. You know?
Didn't they just raise it 15? Yes.
Yes.
14, 14, I believe.
So, so you have to keep all of, all of that in mind when you're deciding, is it okay to go, go for, you know, that? It is a burden on the taxpayers, but at the same time, we have to keep the doors open. We have things that we need to do to try to keep things balanced. You all have the history of our millage. The other thing is, any dollar that you don't capture this year, you never get back. Because of the way Act 1, Act 1 is structured. Let's say if you said, okay, we're only gonna go to bring in 400,000 new taxes, we can bring the next, next year. We can take what we're gonna take next year and grab that other 400 cost, we can't. Because it sets back at zero every year and go to there, so it exponentially goes. You have an opportunity here to put us in a good position moving forward, but it's not an easy, it's not an easy position to be. I'm gonna give you one other piece of information. So that, that spreadsheet that I gave you is our annual payments. That's principal and interest. But if somebody won the Powerball tomorrow and said, we want to pay your debt off, the reality is we're, we have $43 million in, in bonds. So if we take it all the way out to 2043, it's 61 million total, but that's the interest on the cost. The principal is at 42 million. The, the reality is, you'll probably end up paying more than 61 million somewhere down the road, because you'll, you'll take some of these bonds. You'll, like people will do with home equity loans, the conditions will be favorable to reissue and things like that. So I can't tell you in any of this, if there's not high school renovation money in there, or what, what's all in there. I can tell you in the, the, the Series A and B of 2023, we have pension money in there. That's all, that's all new, completely new debt, those two. The others can be a combination of new debt at the time, for those of you that were on the board, or rolling over and refinancing. But that gives you an accurate picture on the, and that's on the expenditure side, that'll be more next year. But I wanted you to have a clear picture of where we're at that way. It's not pretty, but we've done a lot of work. And I will tell you that, you know, I, I, we've not lost programming. There are no, there have been no reduction in classes that we offer. There's been no reduction in courses that kids can take. There's been some reduction in staff. There's some staff that we're continuing to look to fill, and you'll see, we'll probably have those conversations later tonight. But we keep moving forward in this, where it really does a good job of keep us moving forward, but knowing that you have some difficult decisions to make. Because we do have aging buildings, we do have an economy that's up to, I mean, if we were to put conditioning and heating in this building, which it will need somewhere in the next five years, probably, we're talking $5 million. So we have to position ourselves for that. It's nice that we have labor peace with both of our, our unions for at least the next four years or so. So we know those are costs of fixed. Healthcare is an issue, you know. The Peasers, the retirement system is an issue. Jamie, you mentioned the basic ed subsidy. That's the, that's the portion of the budget that's subject to the lawsuit that happened last year, where it was found that the state is not reimbursing us to the degree that they should be reimbursing us. There are those that think that'll take years for them to fix. There's no easy answer. It's hard to put the burden on the taxpayers on property tax over time. But that's where we are, so, are there any questions?
Thank you. How about Mr. Ziegler?
Sure. Evening, everyone. I don't have too much, just two pretty good items. Middle school, high school, chiller. It's two-stage. The first stage, suction line leaking very bad, we lost a lot of refrigerant. We have those repairs, quote signed. We'll get a repair here as soon as they can get out here and do so. Second one, unfortunately, the baseball team, we lost our winch on our net at the middle school, high school. I found a company through Porter, it's, and it's a sub-vendor, which is Instinct Athletics. I received the quote yesterday and got the PO today, got the parts ordered. So he couldn't verify exactly when was coming, but he said give him one to two weeks. So hopefully, we're looking at more like one week. And then the maintenance staff will rent the lift and we'll get that repaired. But that's about all I have, and I'll leave it open for any questions.
Do we have a game plan for the lights out here?
We do. I talked to Adam today. He's gonna try to come this weekend, and then additionally, the one up in the corner at the middle high school lot. Yes.
So we have a couple tournaments.
I know, and I feel terrible, there's a short in one of the polls.
Yeah, I didn't realize until I was up here, you know, what was going on. Okay.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. Mrs. Slay?
Good evening. We're in the process of stocking our shot for 24, 25 school year. Don't be surprised, Jamie, when you see some of the bills. Oil is, it's gone up like $300 a barrel, like 55 gallons, it's crazy. So we've bought a bulk, trying to save some money. Pennsylvania State Police tentatively will be here May 30th and 31st, which is great, it's early. If they don't make it then, we have alternative dates of June 10th and 11th, I believe. So we've got everything ordered for that, we're good to go. Bus garage is fully staffed, however, with sports coming, you never know what's gonna happen. We had an issue today, we have an issue tomorrow, we're trying to work it all out.
You'll work it out. You always do, Mrs. Slay. Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Nogadakis?
Good evening. Really, this month is starting the PIMS, the, the other side of PIMS, finishing off the year with school safety reports for buses and fire drills and other things. Another thing that's, has come up is, the state and other testing organizations are starting to push online testing. So all SATs are now online, and they're no longer paper and pencil. So when our kids go out to another school, they have to either have a device or use our device. So we just have to make sure that it has a separate program where they have to sign out and they can access. So I get emails randomly, like this kid is taking the SATs. So I call them down, make sure that the program works on their machine, and then send them on their way. And I wouldn't be surprised in a year, this is gonna be all state testing as well, like PSAs and Keystone's. So that's gonna be a big, a big test whenever it comes, because having every student, three through eight, on the network at the same time trying to do a test may be very troublesome. So it's stuff we have to look into, probably this summer and the next year, what our options are. They do have, where you can send everything to a server, and then the server will send up to the testing site, almost like as a, a backup server, and try to alleviate the load, but it's still a lot of, a lot of data again to push through. So, just something that, that I have to worry about, but it, it's coming down the line. The way, I mean, last year, SATs were both, and now it's only. And that's the same with the AP tests, I believe, and ACTs maybe even, so, just something to look forward to.
That's a good habit.
It's not gonna go away, so, and to save money on paper and whatnot, it's, it'll be down the pipeline soon, so.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Burton?
Good evening, everybody. I guess the biggest thing I've been doing is working on our special ed plan, because it was only due two years ago, but it's back online for us again. So doing that, we completed our Indicator 13 post-review, and it seemed to go very well. And that is looking at transition services and how we document it in the IEP. So the Indicator 13, I can't think of the word, the, the audit, sort of like we had always precedes the special ed. So we're gonna be audited next year in special ed, so it always precedes that. So we're getting ready for that, so hopefully it'll go well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Schiffer?
Hello, everybody. I have a couple things to report out on tonight. First, on behalf of our school counselors up at the middle high school, they are beginning scheduling. It's hard to think that we are already looking for, forward to the next school year, but they are starting that process specifically with our eighth grade students. And they're taking the time to meet with them and help them transition to high school, which is another big transition, even though we are one building, that eighth to ninth grade jump is huge for them. So they're helping with that, and they are inviting all eighth grade students and families to an informational meeting on Wednesday, March 20th, at 6:30 PM in the high school LGI. This is to review any transitional information moving into high school and answer any questions or concerns the families or students may have. They will start that scheduling process on Friday, March 22nd. So that's to help with that. In another note, I'm pleased to announce the official launch of Burgess Town Middle High School's official Instagram page. We recognize that social media is evolving. We've faced some challenges. We've faced some challenges, but we wanna reach our students on a positive level, and we recognize that social media is a huge part of their lives. So we started this Instagram account. It's called simply Burgess Town Junior/Senior High School, and its handle is always a blue double. I've printed out, um, some Q R. codes for each of you. As I stated, if you have an Instagram account, I encourage you to follow it. Our focus is to celebrate the daily victories of Burgess Town Middle High School, and we're hoping to strive for positivity and celebrate success one day at a time. So, thank you.
Mrs. Schaefer, who is the gatekeeper of this account? You, okay. I didn't know if it was.
I am.
You lucky.
D M. for contest.
Thank you. Mr. Fadden.
Good evening. I haven't D M.'d anyone, so I'm not on top of the social media situation, but, um, wanted to reflect on our career day that we had on February sixteenth. We had it for grades nine through twelve. We had the seventeen different career clusters represented in the gymnasium. They all had tables, uh, around the gym. All of our students walked around. They had to meet with at least two of the career clusters. And after speaking with several of the kids, they were like, we definitely met with more than two. It was a big adjustment from how we've done it in the past, where they would just see speakers and be in the same room for roughly forty-five minutes to an hour. They got to interact with different people, and the feedback that we got from both students and the different representatives that was there was extremely positive. They really liked the setup that we had. This could not have been possible, um, without a lot of different people. Well, first off, I wanna say, after the students were done with that, uh, they did write reflection pieces on what they learned about. That happened later in the, the day. There were a couple periods that they had after that. And then actually, the following week, they wrote thank yous, and they put them in Google Forms, and they were sent to the presenters. And if you could see some of the thank yous that the students wrote, they were really good. Really passionate, really nice things that they wrote, and the presenters gave us a lot of really good feedback on what the students said back to them. But like I said, this was not possible without a lot of planning, a lot of commitment. We had a committee that, uh, I know Chris Miller has resigned. Chris put a lot of time and effort into this, along with Matt Taylor, Holly Riley, Beth Roman, Zuri Vigilotti, Maria, and Melissa Ferencua. We met, we've been meeting about this for months. We planned. There was a lot of planning that went on with it. It wouldn't have been possible to have a successful event without the amount of planning that we took forth. But then there were also other additional people that were behind the scenes that people don't know about. The work that Nav and Jacob did, setting up seventeen View Sonic boards and getting them all to work that morning. We didn't know how it would work, but it did. And thank you, Nav. Thank you, Craig and his staff, because without them, we would have never had the table set up and everything in place. The teachers did a great job being present and accountable to the students in this, because they were interacting with the students, and they were talking with presenters as well. So it really made for a great day. And then, lastly, the presenters and the students, they just did an awesome job. It wouldn't have been a successful event without all the different people that played a piece in this. And we really look forward to next year and this event continuing to grow. Thank you.
Lots of good stuff. Thank you, Mr. Fadden. Mrs. Manke.
Good evening, everyone. I'm surprised Brian didn't tell you about the, uh, event we attended last week. Mr. Fadden and I attended a safety and, safety and security training at the intermediate unit that was a two-hundred-and-fifty-four PowerPoint slide instructional training. We enjoyed our day together, didn't we, Mr. Fadden?
Maybe you could gloss it out.
Yes, maybe, maybe. Lots of, lots and lots of information. Also, in the elementary, if you're hearing about Hagerty, uh, training or Hagerty phrenemic, uh, phrenemic awareness, I'm in the process of training kindergarten and first grade on, um, a website and online professional development. And Nav, you are gonna be most impressed, because I didn't contact him once. I was able to set up the, my own dashboard. I was able to connect all the teachers, assign their license, get them all enrolled and established. So that has launched for the last couple of weeks. So in the mornings, when the teachers are here from eight to eight-thirty, kindergarten and first grade have been doing team training together under my leadership and direction. So, um, we're very thrilled that we were able to launch that this semester. I also wanna congratulate the second grade team, under the direction of Tony Taz, Evan Leek, Melinda Bowling, and Brittany Crabbe, our long-term substitute in for Ms. Thompson, as well as Heidi Betchart. They did a phenomenal job prepping seven, second graders to perform in front of a full audience in the L G I. room on Friday, and they performed the Lorax. Ken Howard, I made an error in here. I brought up our old special ed director. I wrote Ken Cross instead of Ken Howard. It was Ken Howard that designed the set, and Denise and Vicky provided the balloon arch. So I was most impressed. They practiced for weeks in their classrooms, public speaking, and there wasn't a flaw in their performance. So I thank you and thank all the families for attending. When your champs committee comes to you with a good idea, you just sort of have to roll with it, because you know it's going to be good. So when they asked to do a Rochambeau competition or a tournament, I first said, I have no idea what that is. So it's a rock-paper-scissor tournament. So the students have the ability tomorrow to buy beads, a dollar, with a maximum of three beads purchased. And then they can practice the next two days, and then on Thursday, we're gonna have a school-wide competition, a little tournament, that they can play rock-paper-scissors against each other. And then whoever has the most beads on Friday, we'll announce the winners. So that'll be a little champs fun and fundraiser for our, uh, school. Also, since I love Saint Patrick's Day and, uh, little leprechauns running around, we decided to do a March Spirit Week. So tomorrow, we are selling the beads, and students tomorrow can wear their leprechaun hats, pins. They can wear their lucky leprechaun socks if they like tomorrow, and so we have a Fun Field Week prepared for them as well. And I think that's all I have for this week. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Lots of good stuff tonight, guys. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Burgren. Thank you. And Mr. Bushard.
Thank you. A couple of things. We did have an executive session prior to the meeting, uh, personnel. And then circling back to correspondence, there is an attachment, uh, in Board Docs related to a settlement agreement on a tax appeal that goes back to two thousand and thirteen. So there, the, uh, the property owners, um, entitled to a refund, or it can be applied to the next, um, tax year. I do wanna note, though, that letter that you can read, it says that due to an oversight, it's all months ago, that due to an oversight, the school is a personnel process, the final order, that was not on us. That was there, but, uh, you approved the orig, the original order, so, so we're there. Relative to my report, um, a couple of things. Winter sports ended, and it was a successful winter sports season. You know, there were several records, uh, kind of broken or established new records and things like that. The, the, uh, not just the season records, but individual records. And so, so, so that was, uh, but it's just the way that our students, our student athletes, and our coaches represent all the time, just first class all the way. And of course, that's in all sports, but winter was ending, and we're going right here into, into the spring. I do wanna, uh, do a couple of shout-outs. Cheryl Slay, because, uh, and I, I, she hears this from me, I'll say, well, when's the bus evacuations? I don't know why I worry about the bus evacuations, but in the school code, it talks about in the first seven days, you have to have a bus evacuation, and in the month of March. You have to do it twice. You have to record it. The state now puts it in. And I, I just have this thing about not wanting to miss these sessions. Oh, we had that scheduled months ago. It's ready to go, so the other day, you had them, uh, the bus drivers do a phenomenal job with the evacuations, and they couldn't do it without Cheryl, so thanks, Cheryl. To the, to the principals, you know, what, what Mrs. Manke said about, uh, that safety training and all those slides and things, you know, any principal will tell you, will tell you that, uh, you know, we, academic society, and obviously, we're here for the, for the students academically, but the safety and well-being of all students is, is kinda like your, your prime concern. And we've had some, some incidents over the past month of student health kinds of issues and a few other things that, if it wasn't for the, for the quick thinking of our principals and our school nurses, uh, and, and mobilizing and getting into action, you know, things could, could go upside down pretty quickly. But orders maintained, students are taken care of, and it's, it's heartening to know that we have principals that, that create it. And I wanna, I wanna thank, uh, all three principals for that. They're not the only ones, but, uh, you know, it's, it's huge that way. And then, uh, finally, um, you do have a, a, a few resignations, um, on the agenda tonight, but I do wanna do a shout-out. Two of those resignations are, um, custodians here in the elementary center. And, um, Michelle Vaca and Paul Gerard. And for those who don't know, Paul, this is Paul's area. So, you know, uh, he, he takes pride in, in setting us up, and he comes downstairs and, do you need anything else and things like that? So he really is responsible for us doing, doing this, and, 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 uh, you know, you lose institutional knowledge when people retire like that. But, uh, they, they, they've made it to, to the end of that, and they're ready to go, but, uh, we certainly thank them and all, all, all people that retire. But I just wanted to, because Paul is, you know, with us and we're.
After that work, he always says, "Good night, and you're fine with leaving."
He does say that, too. You're right. And I'm being nice, you know, so, uh, I can't blame him, I guess. I wish them well at their retirement, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bushard. May I have a motion to approve all administrative reports as presented?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section five, Budget and Finance, Mr. Taz.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the bills from March point twenty-four as presented.
May I have a second?
Lord.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five point two, Financial Statement. I'd like to make a motion to accept the financial statement as presented, please, on file for.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five point three, Inventory Control. I'd like to make a motion to prevent donations, sale, and or disposal of the following sensory tools. Second.
Mr. Shalinski, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Two, I'd like to make a motion to ratify acceptance of the donation of a N E C V three-hundred W projector, valued at six-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars from Range Resources according to the attached asset transfer and donation.
Second.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section six, Education, Mrs. Lemon.
Thank you. Good evening. Under six point one, the Health and Safety Report, uh, nothing to report at this time. Six point two, the Enrollment Report can be found online. Six point three, the Guidance Newsletters, the links are attached here and can also be found on your email. Six point four, Scholarships, that information is also attached to Board Docs. Six point five, Professional Development. I would like to make a motion, please, to ratify the listed professional development as presented with costs to be paid by Title Two. Bryden Fadden and Melissa Nonak to attend C D T Data Analysis and Focus Group at the Intermediate Unit One in Cole Center on February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Total approximate cost is one-hundred-seventeen dollars and ninety-two cents. Letter B for Justin Meshuda and Chris Foster to attend Leveraging Technology to Reach More Students in the Math Classroom at Allegheny Intermediate Unit in Homestead, P A. on February twentieth. Total approximate cost, forty-five dollars and ninety cents. And letter C, Deb Cowes, to attend Implementing the Standards of Mathematical Practice and Secondary Mathematics Instruction at Intermediate Unit One in Cole Center on February twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Total approximate cost is ninety-three dollars and ninety-six cents.
That's a motion. May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number two, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the listed professional development as presented with costs to be paid by S X S W E D U Mini Grant and Title Two. Melissa Ferencua to attend S X S W E D U Conference and Festival at the Austin Convention Center in Austin, Texas, March fourth through the seventh. Total approximate cost is two-thousand-eight-hundred-eleven dollars and seventy-four cents.
That's a motion. May I have a second? Mr. Shalinski, all in favor? Or, I'm sorry, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And number three, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the listed professional development as presented with costs to be paid by Title Two. Mark Druga and Braut Vigilotti to attend Bradford House and Whiskey Rebellion Professional Development Day at Bradford House and Whiskey Rebellion Visitor Center in Washington, P A. March twelfth, twenty-twenty-four. Total approximate cost is fifty-eight dollars and fourteen cents.
That's a motion. May I have a second? Second, Mrs. Seko. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under six point six, Agreements, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the letter of agreement with Presley Ridge for Student-Related Services as presented.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six point seven, Memorandums of Understanding. I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the memorandum of understanding between Washington County Juvenile Probation and Burgess Town Area School District in relation to the Student Assistance Program as presented.
That's a motion. May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six point eight, The School Calendar. I would like to make a motion, please, to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar as presented.
That's a motion. May I have a second?
Sorry.
Second, was that Mr. Natalee? Any questions?
I have questions. So, um, my, my main thing I'm asking is, why are there so many Act eighty days?
Okay.
To other school districts.
So compared to other school districts, I don't, I, I don't know that we're.
Well, there's six half-days.
That far off.
Six half-days, three full-days. Fort Cherry, four and a half. Avella has none.
So on, on.
No Act eighty.
On Act eighty, so.
No, they have two, they have two.
So, so what you have to look at is the combination of Act eighty and in-service days. And there, there's a difference. So, yes, we do in-service, we do professional development on an Act eighty day, but an Act eighty day counts as a student day in the school code. So that's why we designate some as Act eighty and some as, um, in-service days. Or, or, as you know, our contract has one-hundred-and-eighty-six teacher work days. So, and they're very specific about what, when those have to be. So, um, every, you, the school code also says, though, well, it's a little different, I'll talk about it in a second, one-hundred-and-eighty days of school. So when you have the Act eighty days, every day less than that, it still counts as a day of school. And we, we, I think we've talked about that in the past. So, so that's why we need the time. We don't have as many days in our, in our contract for professional development. So we use that time. Now, we did scale back to Act eighty half-days this year and pulled those back, because in, in, uh, the collective bargaining, in the, in the contract negotiation, as you know, we, um, worked with the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the after-school time, so we could do a little more with it. So our hope is to perhaps get to the point where we don't have any Act eighty half-days. Now, there is a caveat to all this that's not, not, doesn't pertain to this current calendar, but it pertains to the change in the school code. It's very recent. And it, the way the code was forever and ever was one-hundred-and-eighty school days and X number of hours in a school year, so they, and, so nine-hundred-and-ninety at the secondary level. Now it's four. So districts are getting together, that's about December. The districts are getting together to say, hey, how do we structure a calendar even more creative than their districts that are talking about one to four days a week instead of five? There's just all kinds of things. Our administrative team went to a, a session at the I U. recently on that. We're not ready to do anything bold, that bold yet, but we can look at how we use our time. So I think you're gonna see over the next couple of years, not just Burgess Town, many districts maybe even move away from Act eighty days altogether, because you don't have to now apply for an exception. If you go less than one-hundred-and-eighty days, you simply have to make sure you have the number of hours in. You can't make those changes overnight, because you have teachers' contracts that say seventy days. You have support staff contracts that say they're guaranteed seventy days and things like that. So I don't know if that adds a really long answer to your question.
Well, I'm glad you're improving me. The whole thing for me is, an Act eighty day, like you said, there's only so many days a teacher can be in front of a student, and an Act eighty day is taking one of those days away. So, but there was a reduction from two from last year.
There was, we were at two less half-days this year.
Yes.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six point nine, Course Selection Booklets. I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five course selection booklets for the middle high school as presented.
That's a motion. May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? I have one. Have we eliminated any courses for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five compared to the. Have we eliminated any courses for 2024, 25 compared to this year? Are we eliminating any courses?
There are no courses in the, in the high school, in the course description book that are eliminated, right? There was some name change, there's nothing that's changed that way.
So same as, okay. Any other questions? That was my question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section seven, personnel. Mr. Price.
Personnel, seven point one is the employment disclaimer. Seven point two deals with resignations. Recommended action on the resignations and motion to ratify the exception of with regret the resignation as listed of the following personnel. From the long senior class co-sponsor, Pandit Abhansu. Senior class co-sponsor, Michelle Breckin, custodian. And Paul Gerard, custodian.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Taz. Any questions? For the senior class co-sponsors, that job is posted. It was posted in anticipation.
It was posted at the end of last week in anticipation of it, so the posting has to be for 10 days, and then we can move forward.
And if we have no internal applicants, can we open this outside to outside sponsors if they want to work with Mr. Fadden and help?
Certainly, I, I
Like a cheerleading sponsor?
Right. Because what we're not going to do is, I mean, you know, we're going to make sure that all the things, the senior class, obviously, they have their, their picnic
Right.
plan for, their trip, their senior class dinner, and then, of course, commencement. So these are things that all come at, at the end of the year. I know the commencement's on a lot of people's minds because of Starlight. But, but the reality is that's something that we never know until, you know, later. I went back in my emails and I think the past two years, we didn't know till mid-April. And we're very aware of that and we know that the seniors are kind of stressed about it. But the end's in sight. We're just not sure where that, that commencement exercise is going to be. So those people, they just want to get to do all that.
Great. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point three, employment. Motion to ratify the following employment item, the A, would be correct, to the position of long-term substitute teacher at a prorated salary according to the DAE professional agreement beginning on January 2nd, 2024. That's a motion.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, a motion to approve the following employment. Leslie Santacola to the position of teacher, September 10th, masters plus 45, beginning on a date to be determined, pending receipt of all paperwork. That's a motion.
May I have a second?
Sure.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven point four, additional compensation. Motion to approve the payment of the following stipends from the football booster account. Section A, names as listed. That's a motion.
May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, a motion to approve the listed additional compensation item. They're listed one through six. That's a motion.
May I have a second? Second, Mrs. Seko. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
These adabsents, a motion to approve voting leash bus driver for the following unpaid days, February 15th to 16th of 2024. That's a motion.
May I have a second? Second, Mrs. Seko. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, motion to approve Kristen Primos, cafeteria monitor for the following unpaid days, February 20th to February 21st, 2024.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, a motion to approve Maria Cali Manko, cafeteria monitor for the following unpaid days, February 23 and February 29.
That's a motion. May I have a second? Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, a motion to approve Shonda Johnston. Head assistant cook for the following unpaid day, March 4th, 2024. That's a motion.
Second, Mr. Shalinski. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section eight, athletics and related activities. Mr. Metallik.
The athletic reports available online.
I have a question regarding athletics. When we give out the keys, you might know this, Mr. Zabroka, or maybe not. When we give out the keys to like the youth programs, how do we ensure that we're getting those keys back?
So I only
Yeah, and that there are copies floating around.
So the only keys that I distribute are to coaches.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. And what do we do if, so we don't even know how many's out there?
So I keep a log of anything that I would ever give out to somebody because the coaches are changing consistently or coming, you know. I just try to make sure I get them back. But when they do leave, they'll turn everything in to the A.D.
And what if, so like a youth league, if they don't turn in the keys, what do we do?
So if I, if I know, like, we had talked about one today, then I contact that individual and say, and the key's back and
But how do we know that they don't make copies and they're not getting it?
So if I may, the keys to your buildings, you just can't go to Home Depot or Lowe's or the local hardware store and make the key.
But everybody in Burgess Town knows a guy. I mean, true story.
What's that?
Right? True story, everybody in Burgess Town
Knows a guy.
Knows a guy.
Well, no, I, I, I understand, but yeah. They're commercial keys from Slade and Corbin Russell. And you have to go to like Sheerelock and Key, AG Morrow Company. Now, let's just use the gate key. And that's for buildings. But like your gate key, yes. I mean, there could be, there could be 520 of them out there. I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
It's just a master key that you can get anywhere.
Would it be, and we've kind of talked about this before, a super big and expensive job to change everything to keypads? Like on all of our concession stands and restrooms at the stadiums and the, and the field up here and whatnot?
I wish I had a dollar amount for you because I did buy one for the concession stand. It's not installed yet. It just came in about, about two weeks ago. But I don't remember the cost.
Okay.
So I, I would want to tell you something that was not true.
No, I appreciate that. Thanks. For this concession stand or the field?
At the football field.
At the football field.
Yes. This concession stand up here does have a keypad at the baseball field.
Yes.
You know, as soon as we find out you have it, we change it right away.
They have a safety grant.
Those ones you may be able to, I mean, we put, we put the safety grant in for the swipes for both buildings. I don't know that we'll get it. That would be nice. And then, and then you could always do a grant revision once you get the money. So we could look to do that. I just found out last week that they also make app-controlled pad box. You know, they're like 75 bucks a piece. That we may want to move to something like that too.
And then you Pets too.
Make them for your pets. So it's, you know, it's, it's an ongoing thing.
It is.
You know, at least if we could change codes.
Yeah.
I'm kind of excited that we're doing one down at the stadium.
I just worry that there's keys everywhere. I do. After we had a couple incidents.
Also make people get IDs to swipe in and out, so you know it's going in the building or not.
You mean in, in
At the high school, yeah. Ask for, for new things, like have a lock door and swipe to get in, make features.
So we, we have, we just submitted that grant proposal to put a swipe card on at least on every exterior entrance, not necessarily door, but entrance. I believe the estimate's $218,600.
Two in, yes.
So, you know
That's, that's not including our athletic.
And that's not including athletic things. So, but it's
I like that idea.
It is nice because, for example, we did put the two swipes on the bus garage side of the high school building. And now that's what the teachers uses there, even their swipe in and swipe out thing. So there's a lot of things like that. You can look and see who came in through there. Down here at the elementary, there is a, there's a front door, is it keypad or it's a keypad? And Melissa works with Craig to change that, but I think at least there, at least once a year, if not more often. And then takes a look at that. So we have, I mean, just take 20.
All right, thank you. Section nine, transportation. Mrs. Seko.
Report is online.
Thank you. Section 10, buildings and grounds. Mr. Taz.
We held a building and grounds meeting last week. I also forgot to mention, we held one for finance as well. And then we'll be having another one beginning of April for our next meeting. The building grounds report is attached.
Thank you. Section 11, Western Area Career and Technology Center. Mrs. Seko.
There's nothing on the agenda. However, I do want to state that tomorrow is Career and Job Fair Day that's scheduled. And they are in the process of scheduling a signing day where students that are going to go up to go on to work, that they actually have a signing day with their future employers. And that will be all over social media. And I do ask that if you're not already on there, to go on there and get the weekly updates for social media and all the updates.
Is that new?
The signing day?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
I thought, I, okay, that's not
Yeah, I was going to think your truth.
They've done it in the past to some degree, but not to what they are doing. Mr. Wambich and Mr. Patel have really taken it from really funny
Do we have everything confirmed for the blacks?
I have a meeting there on Thursday that I'm hopeful that all we see the proof.
Section 12, food service. Mrs. Walsh.
The food service report is available online.
Thank you. Section 13, student discipline. Mr. Burgoyne.
Nothing to report.
Section 14, policy. Mr. Shalinski.
14-1, the first reading of the list of policy presented, 903, can be found online. 14-2, final reading. Motion to approve the listed policies as presented, A through F.
That's a motion. May I have a second? Second, Mrs. Seko. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
14.3, notice of adoption. Motion to approve the intent to comply with the notice of adoption of approved LEA policies, procedures, and use of funds with the intermediate unit one as presented.
That's a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Seko. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Section 15, new business, new business.
Yeah, with the grant that I was speaking of, it's 25% match is what it is. Unless we fall under requirements that be waived or reduced for a school district that has either financial watch or financial recovery.
We're neither of those two things. But still, 25% of 5 million.
Yeah. Well, up to 5 million. So that has to be at least $500,000.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I ask a question? Can you tell me what positions the long-term substitute was for in the teacher position? What classes?
Second grade.
Second grade and then
So second grade and then the, the teacher is the business enterprise for
Thank you. So I had a couple of things. Mr. Pushkar kind of touched on this. There's this rumor in town that we've had the graduation dates since December. And the board and the administration's privy to that. And we're just not giving it to the senior class for some reason. And that's just not true. We don't typically have that date until at least mid-April, if not later. I think when I was in high school, it was like May, we got the date. That is not true. There's also some rumblings in the community. There was some talk about us eliminating positions and things like that. And I don't, I don't think that our kids are lacking in any way. My, my kids in school here, I think all of our kids are here. I think our kids have a lot of opportunities here. And one of the things that really kind of bugged me is there was a comment that when Mrs. Froats retired, we didn't replace the guidance counselor. And that's true. We did not. But Mr. Pushkar noticed a need for our community and our students to replace that position with a social worker, which we have done. And I think that that's benefited the students greatly, having a social worker available during the day. And I just felt that these rumors that are in the community that are kind of, I don't know if it's an attempt to slander the board, slander the administration, or just cause havoc in general. But I just kind of wanted to set the record straight tonight because it's, I took it very personally when they said that we had the dates and we just were not giving them to kind of bother people or whatnot. And, and we make these decisions, like the one with the, the social worker, because of our kids, because we want to take care of our kids. So on the surface, if, if it looks like we're making a, a decision that perhaps maybe the community doesn't agree with, I encourage them to reach out to the administrators of their buildings, to Mr. Pushkar, so all of these available. And they will take the time to explain what's going on, why the decisions are being made. We're online with these meetings. Anybody can watch that and get the information here. I just kind of felt like I needed to set the record straight with those two things tonight. So that's anybody else? Session 16, legislative. Mr. Metallik.[1781.01]